All right, Ways and Means Committee, we're back. Council ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 20...
I'm sure we'll do that again when we get it.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ways and Means Committee back for Council ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. We're going to skip introductions. Mr. Garbar, Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm Matthew Garbar, Director of the Mayor's Office, Infrastructure Development. I'm joined today by members of my team. Associate Director for Project Management, Tony Scott, is here, and Chief of Grants Management, Anne Haskins Brookover, is here as well. I'm also joined by members of my team from our three areas, Grants Management, Project Management, and Contracting and Capital Programming, behind me. The Infrastructure Office was established in July of 2022 to enhance Baltimore City's public infrastructure by bolstering resources for capital projects, providing targeted oversight on critical infrastructure, and advocating for systemic improvements to optimize public infrastructure delivery. While the passage of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act was the driving force behind this office's creation, it was always intended to look more holistically at all of the city's physical infrastructure. As I noted, the office has three different areas: Grants Management, Project Management, and Contracting and Capital Programming. Our overarching goals are to maximize grant funding from the Infrastructure Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act, optimize capital delivery processes, and ensure projects are delivered on time and on budget. We're able to either directly lead these efforts or support and coordinate with our agency partners. We want to meet our agencies where they are and where their capacities and capabilities are, and support them and strengthen them as we can and as they need. In terms of the budget for the office, this office is budgeted within the Mayor's Office. The $1.74 million budget is actually around $500,000 higher than the fiscal '24 budget, as savings that were included in fiscal '24 have not been retained in this. That being said, three positions in the office are being abolished as part of the citywide effort to reduce vacancies. Infrastructure Office is also participating in the performance measurement process and have developed performance measures. I do want to note that these are very much dependent on agency performance. We're a supportive office, we're a coordinating office, so we have to work with our agencies to make sure that the projects that they're delivering are on time and on budget. So that is one of the challenges in working through that, because a lot of these projects are decentralized, and a lot of the programs and management are decentralized. These are just three of our metrics: grant funding, percentage of projects to be completed on time, percentage of projects to be completed on budget. I'd like to highlight a few achievements and provide some updates about the office over the past year. While the previous slide did show that the performance metric for the grant success rate was 75%, the number's actually quite higher. While a majority of the grants are still pending that we've applied for, only about 4.1% have actually been rejected thus far. So that's a small, small portion of the grants that have been rejected. We chose a more conservative metric, given the future uncertainty, not only of funding, but also of many of the programs in Washington, D.C., because there is a lot of uncertainty down there. It's one of the reasons why we are driving as hard as we can to get as much money as fast as we can get it, in case some of that funding was to run out or were to be changed. Since the passage of the Infrastructure Law and the Inflation Reduction Act, we've applied for nearly $289 million in federal grants. Of that, we've been awarded $124.3 million, and $152.5 million of that is still pending. As you can see, fiscal '24 is when the majority of the grant awards have occurred, at $105.7 million. That's when a lot of these programs have gotten underway, and a lot of the guidance and all has come into effect. I should note that this is just discretionary competitive grants. The city has also maintained a higher federal transportation funding level through the formula funds that federal programs guarantee. That is at a sustained level of $40 million, and that is, again, over 30% up from pre-Infrastructure Act levels. So that is being maintained as well each year. Couple of highlights from fiscal '24. As I mentioned, we take a collaborative approach with the agencies, as well as with outside organizations, to develop robust grant applications. We work with agencies and stakeholders on a case-by-case, grant-by-grant, project-by-project basis to determine how we can support them and their efforts the best that we can. Sometimes we take the lead in applying and developing the application, other times the agencies take the lead, and we're more of a technical consultative support in that role. These are just a few of the highlights for this past year. We were awarded, the city was awarded $4 million for construction of a new composting facility under the solid waste infrastructure for recycling program. The city was also awarded $6 million for a second reconnecting communities planning grant for Druid Park Lake Drive. The key thing about this is that the local match was waived, so this is essentially 100% free money. So that has been an added benefit that we have been able to look at those and successfully get some waivers or apply for some waivers. Lastly, the city received a $9.92 million Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. This is the largest award in the country under this program, and it was specifically for complete streets demonstration projects. So the federal government did, has taken, you know, the city's efforts on that area have been viewed very favorably, and these are some quick builds, some quick demonstration projects that will be utilizing this funding. For pending awards, I want to highlight a $15.5 million raise grant that would fund the NPO study and 30% design of a replacement Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bridge, and a recent $37.9 million port infrastructure grant for a company, for Hellenic Cables, where the city would be looking to make some improvements within the channel and the harbor itself to support this business, which is looking to develop a $300 million manufacturing center down in Wagner's Point. In terms of project management and oversight, we've worked with all agencies to prioritize infrastructure projects in the CIP and to help develop a project list that we track monthly of top priority projects that they're working on and that the administration is focused on. We've also convened monthly meetings with the administration and agencies to review projects in person, essentially a STAT process, but for capital projects. Additionally, we've convened a monthly, what we're calling a capital advisory group, that's made up of city agency heads and leaders to discuss ways to promote and develop the capital program. Finally, our project managers meet daily and talk daily with many agencies to resolve various interagency issues, coordination issues, and other problems that they may encounter. This is an example of what we review during our monthly monitoring meetings. This is a standardized reporting template that contains consistent information. It's updated monthly on different projects. I should, I do want to note that we're still refining this. One of the issues that we are working through is data and the quality of data among our different agencies, as well as the means of reporting and the means of managing projects. We have a very decentralized process where agencies individually manage projects, and there is not necessarily a uniform way of managing, of tracking, of monitoring, and getting this data. We are beginning to do that, and we're trying to put it into this system and hopefully build off of that with some other improvements that are being made to other systems around the city. Our project managers also manage high-profile projects that don't neatly fit into one agency. We worked to extend the lease of the Sun Building for five years and are working on a design agreement for a full reconstruction of the Sun Building for critical public safety purposes. We also worked with the Homeless Services Office and the Department of Real Estate to negotiate the acquisition of two hotels earlier this year and to guide that through the process through closing. And on a smaller scale, we've been working with DPW and the Department of Real Estate as they consider and we consider the future of the Sisson Street Convenience Center and how improvements can be made there and what the best additional use and future of that project would be. Finally, there are a few additional things I want to highlight. We do have, three members of the staff have received their project management professional certification, as was promised last year. In terms of the Green Book, we've made a lot of great progress in drafting updates. However, that has taken a lot longer than it was originally thought. Additionally, a lot of the Green Book provisions do contain procurement and administrative provisions that are really procurement-related in essence, talking with others, the Department of Finance, Procurement Bureau, others. We think it best to ensure that that goes together with overall procurement reforms so that there's not an inconsistent standard and confusion is avoided, and that we make sure all the legal and regulatory issues are worked out in one place. Finally, we're working on convening an infrastructure summit for the fall and have also begun a project to evaluate the city's real estate portfolio in the downtown region, along with various city agencies and offices. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, but before ending, I would like to emphasize that what I've just described is only the projects and the areas that Baltimore City is working on. The state of Maryland, federal government also have major projects and infrastructure investments in Baltimore City. This includes the $7 billion Frederick Douglass Tunnel, the $450 million Howard Street Tunnel enlargement, improvements to Penn Station, the purchase of new light rail cars and buses, and several improvements to the Port of Baltimore. State is also looking at a nearly $2 billion construction project for a new, for a new Key Bridge within the next four years. So as projects stand now, everything totaled within the city of Baltimore, we're looking at around $10 billion of federal money that's been committed already to projects within this city. And that is before even looking at the Key Bridge or any additional investments or any other projects. So all levels of government, I wanted to just bring this up because all levels of government are aligned in delivering very transformative, you know, meaningful projects to invest in our city, our residents, our businesses, and our workers. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your work and kicking off this agency and, you know, your past experience. You have proven to be a very efficient leader working with DPW, so appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
So my questions are just kind of phrased around, I guess, some things that are kind of also important to the city. And I'll start off, since you mentioned bridges and the Francis Scott Key Bridge, but we also have bridges that have, haven't had attention since the '60s and '70s, and bridges like the bridge that is close to Polywestern where the students cross to go down to that light rail. Are you, do you have a plan, or have you started checking those bridges? Is your department the department that handles that kind of work as well?
So thank you for that. That's a big issue. That's sort of when I, that's the biggest thing when I think of this role, is bridges. That's the most visual type of infrastructure, and there are a whole number of bridges in the CIP that DOT is working on. What has happened is about a year and a half to two years ago, the Federal Highway Administration changed how projects getting federal funds had to be bid, advertised, and how the contracts had to be written. They added additional bureaucratic changes that had to happen. That forced all of these projects to go through that process. What has happened is earlier this year, DOT's finally gotten through that. So all of those projects now that are in design are actually being, have been assigned to contractors. There's a whole slew, I can give you that list, but they are actively being designed right now. That is a major portion of DOT's capital program, and it is where the majority, the vast majority of our federal formula dollars are actually being spent to improve those bridges.
Thank you. That would be helpful. And so, Mr. Chair, I'd like to request for the committee, this agency, to follow up on giving us a list of all of that bridge-type work that he just mentioned. And so the next question, you also talked about, you know, recycling for a new composting facility, and staying specific to that area that I just mentioned, I know that the vinegar plant and down in that area has, the city has been looking at for various things. I don't know if you have any update of what's going on. The neighborhood around that area continues to ask questions about that specific area. It's also the, you know, near where the Stump Dump is and so on. Any updates with that?
So, you know, mentioning sort of the Sisson Street facility as well, that's had a very long history. There's been a lot of different locations that have been on the table. One of them was the Stump Dump camp small years ago. That is not something that the city wants to pursue using that. There was a discussion at some, one point about could the Fleischmann Vinegar Plant be used to bring that together? It's really not feasible to do that. One of the issues is that site is very contaminated. And if the city were to acquire that property, the city would then have all the liability of that contamination on the site. I believe the former owners are being, are having to mitigate that as we speak. But that was one of the issues that the city did look at, was that level of contamination within that site itself, the city would be responsible for that then.
Thank you for that. And then lastly, Mr. Chair, if I may, the Safe Streets and Roads, you know, the thing here that we on the council are really trying to push with our roads are, and how DOT and other agencies continue to work with revitalization of these streets and adding complete streets and so on. Again, community engagement is kind of like at the top of the list and really having the constituency of those areas involved. And are there, are you, I know you're aware of that. Do you have a plan in place on how to engage with the community with just about everything that you do? Because it's going to, it's, it all is going to involve areas where people, you know, work, live, and play.
Yep. So for all of these federal grants, there is a requirement for community engagement and to write in a community engagement plan. So for this particular grant, DOT did include that. There is a long explanation of that. I can get you that application. They also list the various projects. These are smaller projects, like restriping, relining things, redoing lines. They're called quick build projects, things that can be done within a couple of months. But there is a whole community engagement process that has to be put into the grant in order for it to be received, and I'd be happy to get you a copy of that.
Thank you. Would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. McCray.
Can you tell us the total amount of grant awards since your office was established in June of 2022?
Of grant awards?
Yes.
200, awards, 124 million, 288 million we've applied for.
What's the, like, the total, not the cash amount, but the, like, the total awards? Like, is that against, like, 20 grant awards?
Oh, 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 oh. Yeah, uh, yes, we have that. It's, yeah.
This one? Can you hear me? Sure. So in terms of awards, I, so we had 16 awards in total, 10 of them in the last year. In terms of pending grants, it is another 10, I believe. I'm looking at that, sorry to screw up my notes. And then also, a significant proportion of those grants had an equity component, so about 75% of the money that's awarded has an equity component. Did that answer your question, ma'am?
It did answer my question, thank you. Just as a, as a follow-up, and this may be just a tie-in to what Vice President Middleton was saying regarding, say, public accountability and transparency. One of, when I think about one of the press releases that came about the infrastructure initiative, this was maybe in 2023 of November, it was stated that you guys were going to do monthly reports, monthly agency meetings, which you've outlined within your presentation is happening, but it was also stated that there would be monthly updates that were going to be placed on the website as well. On this specific website, the last update that I'm showing is from November 2023. On the other website that was launched, it was like a story map website that has not been, I would just say regularly updated. I think the last one, maybe it's January or February of this year. How soon are you guys going to be able to put all, going to be able to put, to place all of the information on your website so our community members will know exactly what you're doing? And is this going to be something that will be consistent, as was originally informed to us back in 2023, that it would be a monthly update?
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that question, and thank you for that. That is a, that's a priority that we're working on now. So that's something that I'm, is a priority of mine, and then within the next month or a few weeks, that we want to get that updated and want to maintain that updated. One of the issues was some of the data and some of the information. What we were seeing is, as we were getting monthly reports from agencies, a lot of the data was not the same. There were things that were changing, and it was not, it became, we became aware that there were some issues in the data that was being reported to us. So we had to dig into that. The funding amounts are the same, but the progress of projects, when they're going, how they're going, what's happening with them, that was part of the problem that we are working through now, and we're trying to get something that's consistent and terms that we can use to how to measure where these projects are. But that is definitely a priority that we are working on. Within the next few weeks to a month is something we're working on that, yeah.
So we can expect that July of this year, all of this information would be on a public-facing website for residents? Okay.
I'll commit to that.
For, you spoke about the challenges about data and also about decentralization with a lot of the projects with the agencies. You also stated that, obviously, you guys are going to be putting together some type of uniform way of managing these, so it's not as decentralized. Can you talk about what those processes would look like, that you are going to be putting together?
So what we did now is we developed a SharePoint template where agencies input the information themselves. We, that's a lot of time and effort that agencies have to do, because they have to take whatever is on their, a lot of times Excel sheets or whatever, put it into this template in the same format. We then have to go check it, verify it, make sure that it's correct. What is happening is there's a project called Unifier that is going to be merging all of the different project management systems that agencies use into one format. That has been ongoing for the last couple of years. BSIT is leading that. The data migration has been a challenge, to get it all in the same format, in the same terms, because certain agencies have different terms for different things, and changing all of that data to bring it in together. Talking with Director Carter of BSIT last year, he is, has agreed, and we made sure that it was a priority that Unifier would talk to Workday, because Unifier was only originally looking at the project management workflows. So when did notice to proceed get issued? What about this report? It was not tied to the cash, to the dollar figures. So Unifier will be tied to Workday and will be able to get that information. The desire, the hope, the end result is that we will be able to have a system to pull all of that information from one source, one time, and everything is going to be right there. Until that, we are doing sort of these workarounds to try to get the data and to try to put it together and sort of validate it to make sure that it's what, you know, we can, we can talk about and, and get them to discuss. So that's been some of the challenge right now. A lot of it has been because there's not a single system, and a lot of it has also been that the management has not been as robust as it could have been in the past.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen, First District. Dorsey?
Thank you. I don't know how to present this. DOT left a bunch of money on the table last year by not applying for Maryland Bike Ways grants. There was way more money in the coffers at the state level than anybody statewide even applied for, and if we had just applied for it, we would have got more money coming to the city, but they didn't have anybody applying for it. They applied for one Maryland Bike Ways grant last year, and they made a non-city agency do all of the legwork to make it happen. It's just like totally crazy. And we've got lots and lots of bike projects that are, I would say, easily shovel-ready because we have paint and flex posts all over the city that everybody, including myself, hates, right? It's just not pretty, and it's not sustainable, and we've been talking for years.
Councilman, can you hang on one second?
Yeah.
We're having issues with Charm TV, I think, with them hearing. Someone from Charm TV come out real quick?
This is working. Wasn't?
This, you not getting?
Are you, are you, you're hearing us okay? Okay, all right, continue. Thank you.
We've got, we've got bike projects all over the city that, that, that we could be doing hardening for, you know, replacing paint and flex posts with concrete or even prefabricated concrete, I don't know what you call them, the curb height things. We have them over on North Avenue. I just rode past some yesterday. We could be really easily taking the next step with a lot of bike projects, and I know that I've got one in my district that's, you know, we've had this bikeway in place for five years now, and it's time to show people what an iterative process looks like in terms of, like, we have the first iteration, it's paint and flex posts, there needs to be a next iteration that's more attractive and actually safer and functions better. We are now like a week and a half away from the deadline again. Last year, the staff from the administration said, well, how come DOT didn't tell us? They just had a grant management issue. We could have asked Matt's shop to help them with this. I am yet again trying to get them to put this grant together, and they are yet again telling me, well, now we're a week and a half away from the deadline. I've been bringing this up for months. Can you guys help them get a grant in in the next week and a half?
We're, yes, we're happy to help any agency. I know, I've talked to them about this. I know the administration, we've talked about this. We are working with them. I think they are putting some stuff together. They'll have more details on that than I would. One of the issues that they have raised is just their, they've had a lot of turnover and capacity issues, and they want to make sure that they can sustain whatever these programs are, you know, once they get some of this funding so that they don't then have to give it back. But I think they're in alignment, I'm in alignment, we want to work together with them. I do believe that they are working on some, some projects, but I...
I know that they're working on some projects, but I asked them to do a particular project last year, and they could have, they could have thrown it together in no time, and they said... And they said, well, we'll work with Matt's office. And that hasn't happened.
It was one specific project?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get them to do a hardening kind of next phase on Hartford Road from Echo Dale up to Glenmore. Not that I want to use this here to advocate for specific projects in my district, but you know, like if we're not coordinating enough to avail ourselves of money that's just there for the taking.
Right.
Like what are we doing, you know? And if I can get one of these to move forward, then we can set a ball in motion to make a habit of this. And it's one that I'm just very keenly aware of.
Okay. I'm happy to talk to them about that.
I will follow up with you about this today. Thank you.
Sure.
Or did I, did we do you yet?
We did.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Not McCray. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may be a question for the city administrator, but do you, is your office supposed to be forever in terms of, you know, granting, you know, applying and also managing the grants? What's the, what's the thinking around that?
That's a good question. I think the office has evolved a bit in some of the areas that it's focusing on. We've gotten very much involved in a lot of facilities projects. They don't seem to fit neatly in DGS or real estate or other things. I think that is a conversation, you know, that we need to have. I foresee this being a need for the next number of years. You know, what it, what it looks long-term, I think is still to be determined. One of the models we pursued when this was created was sort of a project management office. A lot of cities have that for top-level projects and other things and administration of that throughout cities. That's one model. There are other things that I think there is a need for some of this coordination and oversight and centralizing certain processes. But again, it's, I think it's to be determined based on where things sort of shake out and what some of the big areas seem to be.
Thank you. And I was wondering, since you mentioned it, you had put up a slide on some of the things that you ended up having to get involved in. I get the involvement with the hotels because there is federal money involved with the purchase and the ongoing maintenance. So that makes sense. I don't understand why you would be involved with the Sun Building or the Sisson Street if those are DGS buildings.
So, so the Sun Building is privately owned.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me. You're right. You're right.
So one of the things that we have been working on and is more of different methods of delivering projects, one of which is P3s and using private entities to help deliver those projects. One of our biggest liabilities is our buildings and our facilities because there really is no dedicated source of funding for that where there is for DPW and DOT and other things. So we have been working closely with Department of Real Estate and DPW and DGS to look at alternative ways to fund improvements. And one of them is looking at sort of private arrangements where we can leverage private capital to help bring some of our buildings up to, up to standard.
I'm just curious as to why your office is working through this and not DGS. I'm just trying to understand the org chart here because, yes, we acknowledge that there's challenges with our buildings and DGS has been very clear and they will likely testify later on today about the, you know, the asset management piece. I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously it's our infrastructure. But I guess I thought that the office was set up to look at what all the federal money is out there and get it. So, and then obviously you have to manage all of that. So you are, you said earlier that the office has evolved and obviously this is one of the ways. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the, how it is that, I mean, obviously if there's federal money involved in a building, that makes sense. But if it's just for trying to think through management and, you know, other creative ways of doing things, I'm just curious as to, you know, how that, how that works.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the federal money was the impetus for the office, but it was really to look at all of our assets and all of our physical infrastructure and try to drive progress on them, whether it's through federal money, state money, or private capital, to try to really move these projects forward to improve our infrastructure. DGS only does city-owned buildings. So this isn't city-owned and the real estate department only does the transaction, the, you know, the actual purchase. So there was a gap in these types of projects where no one's really managing it and no one's really taking the lead on it. So that's how it fit into our portfolio. And just looking at the facilities and the other things that, you know, the city needs and is working on, that's how that sort of came into, into play with that. And looking at alternative ways of contracting and helping to improve that process.
But how does that work with Sisson Street, right? Sisson Street is very clearly a DPW building and has to work out what their thinking is. There has to be a lot more community engagement before we do anything.
Absolutely.
I'm just telling you, my whole district uses it and that is going to be an issue. So I just want to clear, just try to clarify what the role is there with Sisson Street.
So, yes. So, so right now it's very much DPW. It's their vision. It's their needs. It's all of that. What we have been brought in to help talk about is with the Department of Real Estate and with DPW, there's obviously interest in acquiring that property. And is there a way to perhaps get a benefit for all parties? Something that's good for DPW, something that's good for a private industry, something that can get the property back on the tax rolls? So again, it was, these agencies had little pieces of things, but there was no one who could sort of manage that or oversee that or bring that together and have that single discussion. So that's how we ended up, you know, being involved in that.
Okay, I might have some more follow-up after I think about it a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Porter?
No.
Cohen? Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, appreciate the work you've been doing to help coordinate these efforts. My first question is regarding the lead connection funding. The city received about $43 million to identify and then eventually replace lead connections from mains into households. And we have to do that by October. I'm curious, is it at all, how intimately involved are you guys with that? Is that mostly you or DPW who's sort of managing that?
DPW is leading it. That's one of the projects that we're tracking monthly. And we're getting update reports on that, yes.
Okay. Do we have the ability to, to perhaps send folks to people's homes?
That has been one of the problems is that DPW is not allowed to enter people's homes. They can provide information, but they are not permitted to go in and do the test itself. There has been some discussion about how, you know, is there, are there resources that can be recommended for constituents, residents to, to use? But right now it is more just advising, calling people up, walking them through it and, you know, putting internet, you know, videos, other things like that online is my understanding of where that stands with them.
So my concern is that we have until October, I believe, to identify the lines. If we aren't able to identify those lines, there's a possibility that we may have to return some of that money. I admittedly have not checked my lines myself, but I would venture to say that a vast majority of folks across the city not only have not checked, don't even know that we're asking people to check. And even further, I was in a community meeting yesterday where a DPW representative was there explaining to folks what needs to happen and folks are just flat-out confused. They didn't know how to check their lines. They didn't feel comfortable, even if they were given instruction on how to handle that. And my big concern is that we may not only miss out on the opportunity to replace lead lines, but we also might end up giving money back if we don't identify these lead lines. I'm curious, you know, and once again, I know this is more DPW, it sounds like, than your office, but it's a really big opportunity for us. We know lead is particularly dangerous for children, but really dangerous across the board. And if we know that we have lead lines in, across the city and we have federal funding to replace those lead lines, we should be doing everything in our power to notify people and replace those lines as quickly as possible while the money is available. So I'm just, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not really satisfied with where we are and knowing that we have until October. I'm really worried that we are nowhere near what we need to be.
So my, my understanding, and again, DPW, they would have more specific details on that, but the deadline is for an inventory. There would be then a future deadline for replacement. I do not believe the deadline is, is, that is when it has to all be identified or else you give money back. I believe it is there. That is the deadline when DPW has to send a report of the inventory. So I do not believe that's when, I don't, I don't believe we'd risk losing funding because of that. That could still be ongoing, but I understand your point. The last update I do recall receiving, I do believe that they were, had received a fairly good portion. I believe it was a higher portion than the county that they had received and from the city, that is, in terms of residents checking their, their lines to see if they were led. And the good thing also is that the vast majority of them are not led, which has been a very good thing that they've seen.
So I, I had, part of my concern is the efficacy of those self-tests. You know, I don't even know what I'm looking for. And I'm, you know, I can ask you right now, what should I be looking for? How do I make sure when I go into my home, go into my basement and check that water line, that I'm checking the right line, the line that connects to the main? Even further, once I do get my penny and scratch it, I don't have many pennies because we're not really using many pennies nowadays. Nevertheless, what color am I looking for? How do I make sure that I've scratched it enough to get, there are so many complexities in that process. And in talking to some experts on this issue, my understanding is that DC has identified quite a, quite a, quite a bit of lead lines in DC. And I would imagine we're just, you know, 50 minutes down the road, we would have a very similar breakdown. So I'm not sure how much this ends up letting on your office or your team, but I do want to express some concern about where we are now. We do have quite a bit of time between now and October, but it is still a very limited amount of time and we have to get to every household we're looking at, you know, over 200,000 households across the city. I just, maybe just a note to the team and, you know, I'll have further questions to DPW about exactly this issue for the future, but.
And I'd be happy to facilitate a conversation and to help support that effort however, however we can.
I appreciate that.
Commit that to you.
My other question is about an issue that was brought up a number of times during Taxpayers Night. A lot of folks are really interested in seeing progress made on zero waste. And our greatest effort to date around zero waste has been around a composting facility. We received a $4 million grant from the federal government to start that effort. We're still about $4 million short. I'm curious what funding we might have available or if there are current efforts to secure additional funding to get that project off the ground, knowing that that also is time-sensitive. We have a 10-year contract that will expire, you know, in seven years, six years. With the incinerator, I do want to position ourselves to make some significant progress here. Is there anything you can share?
Yes.
Hang on. Excellent job speaking into the mic, which is what I'm going to remind everyone of. And you've also been doing a fantastic job of it. Everyone, please speak clearly into the mic like this, close, couple inches away so that the folks watching on Charm TV can hear. Please continue, Director.
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the things that we did with the compost application was there was quite a bit of capital funding that DPW had received for solid waste facility improvements. We wanted to couple that with the compost facility. And that's what we're working with DPW on now, is what types of assets and improvements can be made at Bowley's Lane that could be paid for with other funding that could then support the compost facility? There's going to be similar things like access points, roadways, stuff paving, removal of trees, grading, all of that stuff, that we're trying to see how that can be covered by this other capital funding so that we can actually stretch that to, to improve the facility for our workers, the drop-off center and the compost facility. So that's really the intent there is to sort of use that funding to just provide additional benefits and improvements to the whole area and really get that to a full completion point. Now, my understanding is also that they will be able to build whatever they can build. It'll be just scalable. So if, if it, if it's not what they were originally thinking, it could be smaller, but then it could actually build to just be larger and larger. So it's not like it can't be built if there is a funding issue. It's more of a scalable-type project.
I see. So you believe we should be able to begin the project soon? Regardless of not having that additional $4 million?
My understa, I believe, aren't they doing design now? They're currently in design and it's on, you know, it's being prepared for design and then eventually construction.
Excellent.
Engineers are doing it now, yes.
And last piece on this, do we have any timelines for completion of design and even maybe some soft timelines for construction?
I, sure we do. I don't have it with me, but I can get that.
Yeah. Can, can we make that into a formal request? Timeline for design and construction for the compost facility at Bowley's Lane? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we've cycled through everyone. Vice President Middleton? McCray? Dorsey? Ramos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, can you talk a little bit about this capital group that you mentioned earlier? Talk a little bit about what you're thinking about on that?
So this originally came up last year when we were looking at projects. We wanted to get the agency heads together, heads in the mayor's office, planning, finance, and talk about what projects are challenges. What projects are struggling, what projects are really needing some additional emphasis? And how are we going to prioritize them and what are we going to do with them? From that, we started talking about process. And we started talking about sort of overarching issues that are sort of plaguing a lot of agencies. And then we started talking about how different agencies have different needs and issues. Some agencies do certain things really well, others don't, and then it can be vice versa. And it began, we began thinking, and the CAO led this group, about what is that in terms of the larger capital delivery picture? One of the things that we do as a city is we sort of use the capital program as like a, hate to say it, as a bank account where we put money in and it just keeps building and building and building. Could we get to a point where we know what we're going to do and we focus on that project, build it completely, fund it completely, and then get to the next one? And sort of change the way we're doing that? These are things that obviously we've not had a whole lot of capital available in the past. So we've had to do things to make sure projects can continue. But that sort of decentralized approach has allowed a lot of things to take a long time. And now with inflation, you know, the prices are really outpacing what we're, what we're putting in to projects. So it began looking at individual projects, how we deliver them, how we can make sure they're moving forward. And it started getting into larger process sort of policy and coordination issues of how we actually deliver projects. How we program, how we plan, how we think of things, and, you know, how we contract, all of that stuff. And there's different things that we bring up, the group brings up, you know, as we meet, different things. A big discussion point has been on our facilities and our real estate. How a lot of what has happened over the past few years is agencies just go into private leases, which is a great option if it's done strategically with the bottom line of the budget in mind and it meets the needs of the agency. Are we just leaving, you know, empty buildings that are just going to further deteriorate? So that's been something about that additional strain on the budget that a lot of these leases have been placing on it. So that, these are the types of discussions that have come up and how as a city we can think through some of these and maybe change the way we are looking. But it's all still conceptual, a lot of these things at this point. all still conceptual, a lot of these things at this point.
I'm glad the discussions are happening. I think that's a, those are really critical, particularly when we look at our assets and, and all of that. One thing I would want to throw to that group, two things to throw to the group that might be something to think about is really the transparency issue, um, in terms of, first of all, the interaction and discussion with us as the, uh, people who hear from our, um, constituents. Um, and then also, uh, you know, just how, as you're going through the process, getting some input as well, uh, would be, would be important. And then the second thing would be, I, uh, do not like how the CIP is operated right now. Um, I think there is not a lot of transparency. It does not come before us other than, you know, when we have the capital discussion like we had last week. Um, and I believe it needs to come before us. Um, and that would take a couple of changes in the code. So I'd like you all to discuss that as well and I'll be happy to talk more about that with you.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, the second question, uh, that I had was, um, around the, um, uh, again, just this interaction with, uh, with the council. You know, we obviously have, um, huge projects in our district. We obviously know a lot about them. Um, but if there are things that are coming up that we need to make sure somebody's paying attention to, um, for instance, not in my district, but it does impact my district, the Sisson Street Bridge, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's been closed. Um, uh, I don't want to go into the details because that's not what we're doing here, but that, you know, what, do we just come to you? What is the, what is that? And, and if there's other projects, you know, um, that are coming up that we need to, um, make sure that you all are aware of, that we want you to go and, and apply for federal money, um, to, to go and get.
Yep. That's, that has been a big area that we've, um, been talking about in our monthly meetings with agencies is communication, public engagement and just information. And a lot of it is, um, is very dependent on the project and quite honestly, the project manager and others who are in the agency themselves. What we're trying to do is look at if there's ways to standardize some of that in terms of protocol and how things go and when there is public engagement and how to include the community and all of that. Um, again, that's sort of what's happened in a lot of the decentralized way. It's sort of pushed down to the project level and engineers and others. And some are more skilled in understanding what the level of engagement and the, the community needs are. But that's something that I, you know, the administrator's been very focused on, trying to find ways that we can ensure that that's sort of.
Well, that should also be a conversation with us, right?
Absolutely.
Because we are, you know, the ones who interact with our constituents the most.
Sure.
But we also want a way to be able to say, okay, you know what? I have this, this big issue accompanying in my district and, you know, DPW knows about it, but I want to make sure that you know about it.
Absolutely.
That would be just coming to you, right?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. But we certainly want to be a part of that conversation around the engagement piece, um, as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Porter?
No.
Cohen? Conway? Vice President Middleton?
Thank you. I just want to add about the, with the engagement piece, um, as we're all like partnering and engaging with each other, that, uh, many of us on the council sit on, uh, statewide and national boards. And, um, as a lot of, uh, millions and millions of dollars from the federal government flow to our agencies, it's an opportunity to, um, apply for, um, awards to, um, showcase, you know, around the country, you know, the, some of the wonderful things that we are doing. And I, I want to just throw that out there that, you know, a number of times I, I personally will be sending things to, um, the city administrator that sometimes will push it through different agencies. So I really think it's important to take advantage of that so you can really highlight, especially since you're a fairly new department and we want to continue to highlight the great things that we are doing in our city.
Absolutely.
And that's one effort in doing that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Collins, any other questions? Okay. We are now in recess until 1:00 PM for the CAO.